Could I have a roll call, please?
Can you give Ben some room?
Here.
Michelle Jefferson?
Here.
Kate McKinney? Nathaniel Maltin?
Here.
Doug Olson?
Here.
Marcia Scherz?
Here.
Paul Johnson?
Here.
Pledge allegiance, please. Everybody stand. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, for which it stands one nation under God, in this book with the ready of justice for all. All right. Can I have an emotion to approve the agenda as written, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And we're going to move on to item number three, which is the informational session portion of the meeting. And that is me. We held the committee of the whole just last Monday on September fourteenth, and we did have a discussion and action item to that meeting last week regarding the addendum to the Spooner High School Student Handbook, and there was a motion to approve that addendum changing, I believe it was October sixth, to a full school day versus a half of professional development. Is that correct? Right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And we had presentations regarding the referendum project update with Brad Kunkel from CISA-10, and also with Tom Tuig from SDS Architects. We did discuss the Heart of the North Fall Sports with spectators with Mr. Lucius. He did go through a few things regarding difference in schools, as far as spectator mounts, how many, what he's done, and that again is a fluid conversation and document. So each school is different on who can and will be able to attend a spectator event. We had an update from the district nurse. We will be getting one of those every month at the committee of the whole regarding the health and safety of the students. We had a discussion on the line of credit that is being moved to tonight's meeting with Mrs. Grindell. She had let us know regarding things that we would short-term borrow at the end of December. That happens every year. We had a consensus to move that to tonight's meeting. We discussed live streaming the board meetings on YouTube Live. Mr. Miller gave that presentation, and that is also coming before us tonight. We had the annual seclusion and restraint report from Mr. Hamm, and we received and placed that on file. Dr. Hazen discussed the update on the 2020-2021 school calendar. That is also a consensus to move to tonight's meeting. We had a discussion regarding the sale of the airplane. That is moving again to tonight's meeting for a vote. We discussed the revision of community comments regarding the board meetings, that those are not aligned, and we're trying to get a consensus so that our committee of the whole, our regular board meeting, and our policy all align. You were able to comment on those things and give that to Caitlin, and that will come as example one and two on item H this evening, so we'll have a further discussion on that as well. And we had the thirty-sixty-ninety-day planning cycle. We did consensus to receive and place that on file. We also had a financial update for Mrs. Grindell, which also was a consensus to receive and place on file, and approval of the vouchers. Consensus to move this to tonight's meeting as part of the consent agenda. Is there anything else I missed? Anyone? Okay, all right. And then also in this, you have board reports, so I'm assuming that all of you, I'm hoping that all of you had a chance to look those over. Does anyone have any questions regarding those reports? Administrative reports? No? Okay, then we will receive and place them on file as well. All right. And then we're going to move to community comments. Yes? Oh, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
No more. Sorry.
That's okay. All right, so we're going to move to community comments, and per Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight-three parent two and nineteen point eight-four parent two, the board will allow public comments. The community comment session will be limited to forty-five minutes. The time for each individual will be divided by the number of people signed up for community comments. The community comment section of the meeting agenda provides members of the community with a chance to speak directly to the school board. It is a valuable opportunity for community members to have questions, concerns, requests, and ideas heard directly by the school board and administration. Participants are asked to step up to the microphones so that everyone is able to hear when you speak. Providing your contact information on the community comment signup sheet helps the district follow up with you on your item. We do not have any community comments this evening. All right. We are going to move to the discussion and action portion of the meeting. Item A, consider personnel recommendations. Dr. Hazen?
Here are the resignations before you this evening for your consideration. Carleen Bartle, food service, eight years of service. Chantel Barrett, elementary paraprofessional, one year of service. Dan Anderson, high school assistant football coach, seven years of service. Dina Matsky, high school paraprofessional, five years of service. Sadie Foss, elementary paraprofessional, two years of service. Miles Mccone, middle school basketball coach, two years of service.
I'll entertain a motion to accept these resignations.
I saw move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I want to thank all of these wonderful people for all of the time and energy they put into the school district. We really appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Hiring recommendations for you to consider this evening. Logan Seymour, middle school volleyball coach, replacing Michelle O'Connell, recommended by Mr. Lucius. Amber Alby, middle school administrative assistant, replacing Monique Clark, recommended by Ms. Geese Regan. Casey Stark, long-term general education paraprofessional, recommended by Mr. Hopkey. Brian Amos, high school assistant football coach, replacing Daniel Anderson, recommended by Mr. Lucius. Jose Amparo, high school assistant boys soccer coach, replacing TJ Stillwell, recommended by Mr. Lucius. And Jeff Sobrowski, middle school football coach, replacing Mr. Amos, recommended by Mr. Lucius.
And do I have a motion to accept these hirings?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome to the district. We're glad to have you. This will be a great opportunity for all of us. All right. Moving on to item B is the acceptance of donations. Dr. Hazen?
All right, again, another just wonderful list of donations coming into the district. So the first one are the mountain bike sponsors, and you're going to have to bear with me, Mrs. Olsen, because there's a long list to read.
Yes.
For sure. Advanced Laser, one hundred dollars, also donated four hundred and fifty dollars for Bike Sport or Metal Plaque. Severson's Precision Auto, two hundred dollars. Spooner Physical Therapy, two hundred dollars. Jack's Canoes, two hundred dollars. Thriven Financial, two hundred and fifty dollars. Lakes and Trails, two hundred dollars. The Body Shop, two hundred dollars. Greenfield Physical Therapy, one hundred dollars. Spooner Health, one thousand dollars. Trigo Travel Center, two hundred dollars. The Bell Family, a hundred dollars. First and Vine, two hundred dollars. Northwood, Northwind Book, one hundred dollars. Tammy Ackerson, a hundred dollars. The Sunderland Family, Aspen, Connor, and Piper, a hundred dollars. Red Cross Pharmacy, a hundred dollars. The Potter Shed, a hundred dollars. Marilyn and Bob Mackey, a hundred and fifty dollars. Ben Slater, two hundred dollars. Candyland Tattoo, two hundred dollars. Conomart, five hundred dollars. Hewens, two hundred dollars. River Street Dental, a hundred dollars. Savas Design and Jewelry, a hundred dollars. Foss Construction, Tom and Julie Foss, a hundred dollars. TNT Manufacturing, two hundred dollars. Anonymous, five hundred dollars. Attention to Detail, two hundred dollars. Jason and Suzie Cole, two hundred dollars. James and Sharon Ross, a hundred dollars. John and Sherry Hagan, a hundred dollars. Jeff and Katie Eichden, three hundred dollars. I'll keep rolling here.
Keep rolling.
Yep, yep, yep. Spooner Wesleyan Vacation Bible School Kids to the Spooner Elementary School, thirteen pairs of shoes, twenty pencil boxes, an approximate value of two hundred dollars. From an anonymous donor towards the negative food service accounts, one thousand dollars. KC Loon Lake Association to the Biology Department, one hundred dollars to be used for the aquarium in the Biology Department. And again, another wonderful list that I will read off, cloth face coverings. So just some numbers to share with you here. So this group volunteered to make cloth face coverings and donated them, and the numbers are just really remarkable. Total number of child-sized masks, two hundred and thirty-four. Total adult masks, one hundred and seventy-six. So just really wonderful. And individuals donating their time and talent, Ruskeke, Melissa Merly, Leslie Gunnison, Amy Tyler, Nikki Halverson, Kathy Hanson, Leslie Frost, Corey Belling, Cindy Fagerstrom, Jan Feinman, Terry Ryder, Linda Lutz, Donna Olson, Mary Kirkwood, Carol Leisher, Lois Hegy, and Catherine Holan.
Do I have a motion to accept these wonderful donations?
I make a motion that we accept this extraordinary amount of donations, and also just the gratitude for our wonderfully generous community that makes a lot of things happen here. Thank you.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. You have no idea how much these donations help the kids and people of this district. All right, we're going to move on to item D, consider the line of credit.
C.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, C, consider the fundraiser request. Okay, so. Who's doing that? I'm a little foster right now.
You have a fundraiser request before you tonight, coming in from the Spooner Athletic Department, from Jenny Skogstad, and you had this request about this time last year. It's for engraved pavers. They anticipate a profit of one to two thousand dollars, and just as a reminder, when we addressed this in November a year ago, there'd been some questions that had come up about the fact that, just establishing the fact that the Spooner Athletic Department is requesting permission to sell the engraved pavers to help raise money for outdoor sports. Pavers will be placed in the S design in front of the concession stand by the football soccer field. Yeah.
Okay.
That's the request.
Do I have a, or do I have a motion to?
I'll make the motion to approve the fundraiser request.
I will second that.
Okay, is there any discussion? No? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. All right. Item D, consider the line of credit.
Just recapping, yeah, recapping from the Cow meeting. Just looking for this yearly approval to utilize the line of credit from CCF Bank and for the end of December, beginning of January timeframe.
Okay. Was there any questions regarding this?
No.
Okay. Could I have a roll call vote, please? Oh, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve the line of credit.
Second?
I will second.
Okay, now can I have a roll call vote? Can we start over?
Can you give Ben some room?
Yes.
Michelle Jefferson?
Yes.
Kate McKinney? Nathaniel Maltin?
Yes.
Doug Olson?
Yes.
Marcia Scherz?
Yes.
Paul Johnson?
Yes.
All right. I'm going to move to item E, consider the live streaming board meetings on YouTube Live as presented at the Cow meeting. Can I have a motion to approve this?
I make a motion that we approve going to Facebook or YouTube Live.
Second?
I will second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
The only question I had was, how long will the public have access once it's on YouTube? Does it come off at a certain time, after a year, two years, or will it stay there forever?
Should be archived, shouldn't it?
We'll continue to archive the meetings in our normal spot under the school board section of the website where you can go and just view our archive of all board meetings. So it'll be on YouTube Live, but it also just gets archived within our website.
Okay, so is there a timeline for our archiving then? It'll just be five years, seven years, or forever?
We follow our normal archiving policy.
But we have no control over how long YouTube would store a thing either, though, right?
YouTube could change it, but we have our own number of years replaced to archive those videos, so we'll have a copy that we maintain and choose where to store for our files.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opposed? All right. And I'm going to move to item F, consider the update to the 2020-2021 school calendar as presented at the Cow meeting. Is there a motion to?
I'll make the motion to approve that change to our calendar.
I'll second.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Item G is consider sale of the airplane. And as you, all you have in board docs is a, all of you have seen the bid for the sale of the airplane. Can I have a motion to approve the sale of the airplane?
I'd like to make that motion, and I believe that at the advice of our administration, this is a good offer and should follow along and sell the airplane.
I would second that motion. I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I just want to make a quick point of clarification. It's not a bid. It was an unsolicited offer to buy the airplane.
Unsolicited offer to purchase.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that the other comment I'd like to say is that we need to thank the many community members over the years that have worked on that airplane and really helped our students. And even though it's coming to an end, the end is really pleasant because it's helped so many students and so many of our staff was able to work with people, and hopefully it's helped their education over the years. It's been about ten years that I'm aware of.
It was a great learning opportunity for a lot of students and adults alike, I believe.
We had the community members that came out that were willing to put in their time, stored space, and it was really a community effort. And it's sad to see it go, but at the same time, this was, it's time to put a close on it and move forward. It was a good program.
Yes, it was. Okay, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Can you give Ben some room?
Yes.
Michelle Jefferson?
Yes.
Kate McKinney? Nathaniel Maltin?
Yes.
Doug Olson?
Yes.
Marcia Scherz?
Yes.
Paul Johnson?
Yes.
All right. Item H, discussion of the revision of the community comment portion of the regular board meeting agenda. And as you all are aware, you were given example one and two to see on board docs just a few minutes ago. Some of you provided some information and some input, so Caitlin and Dr. Hazen compiled that information, and basically we're here for a discussion portion of this tonight, correct?
Yes. So if I may, just be, thank you for the input that came in. What Caitlin and I worked on was plugging that input that had come in within that policy template. So you have before you two different examples of how that was put together, and, you know, the task tonight to review it and give any guidance that you will, and we can retool it and then bring it back to you for your October Committee of the Whole meeting.
So we don't need to make a motion tonight?
No.
No, no. So.
This will be a first and second reading type thing, so we'd look to do a first reading at the October regular meeting and a second one in November.
We just didn't know if there was any, do we need a motion to discuss?
Yeah, do we take one?
Well, what I would hope we could walk out of here, out of this discussion, is some direction from the board, some consensus about what you'd like to see, because then Caitlin and I will take it and revise it accordingly.
Then I will start.
Okay.
Example two, I like more, and I'll just give my opinion on that from what I sent. I agree that forty-five minutes should be it and divided among those that come. The biggest thing that I see, the same as what Nathaniel stated last time, I was through the whole stuff before, and when we have a huge thing, I think every person needs to be heard. And I don't necessarily agree that it should be limited to three minutes, because they aren't going to get everything out that they want to say in three minutes. I know I didn't back then. I stopped at some point, but it was very hard for some people, and I was one of them. So I just think that it's very important that we do offer that when it is a big issue. I'm not saying we have big issues anymore. I'm just saying when we do, that it would be something that is important for people to be able to talk about.
I just want to say thanks for putting together those examples. I too agree with example two. But thank you, Caitlin. Thank you, Dr. Hazen. Thank you for putting that together. Appreciate it, and yep.
And my consensus on this is, I, it doesn't matter to me how much time that we give the community. I just want to make sure that all of our policy and the committee of the whole and the regular board meeting align. So whatever we decide, I think it would be in the best interest of the community that they have their time to speak. It's just, we also need to know that we need to align those policies so that everything is consistent, because there are so many different avenues we're following right now. It's just a lot easier if everything's consistent.
I agree with what you're saying, and the only thing is, I would say is, when you read today's announcement before the community comment.
Yep.
There's a portion in there that addresses a person's name, contact information, so that our staff and administrators can follow up with that individual. I am looking at A here, and it's the same as what I said at the Cow meeting, would be, I believe that people should be allowed to talk about any type of school business that they want, not necessarily something that's on the agenda. So if somebody were to come in and say, I've got a concern about the band program, they should be able to come in and address us and speak about the band program, even if it's not an agenda item. So that was my thought, is that we should be welcoming people that want to step forward and share their beliefs with us, and we should be welcoming them to do that, not restricting them. So that was the only thing I would say, is that I would still like to address that in that A item.
When I read A, does A, when it says it's indicated on the order of business, is that agenda items, or is that the order of business is people can speak during the community comments? That's how I read the order of business, speak during the community comments.
Well, as long as everybody agrees with that, maybe I misunderstood what I was reading there. But that was my thought, is when it says order of business, I think that the business at hand, I'm thinking to myself.
And I'm thinking at the prescribed time during the agenda, which is the community comment. How is it supposed to be?
Well, you know, I'd roll, I guess I'd roll this out for your consideration that, so we do do it a couple of different ways. At the committee of the whole, we invite community participation on the agenda items as they're being addressed. So that's an opportunity to ask questions, share insights, things of that nature. The way it is for this meeting, for the regular meeting, is more of an open forum, where people are able to come forward and speak on whatever matter is their matter of concern.
So with that being said, then the topic maybe we should be asking would be, to be consistent, shall we adopt the same for our Cow meeting?
Correct.
Versus not, rather than saying to the people in the Cow meeting, you have your opportunity prior to our discussion to speak to us, but there will be no discussion during the middle. So in other words, our Cow meeting is more informal. We're allowing people to speak when we get to that topic.
Right.
And I think that's the reason for having a Cow meeting. It's a committee meeting, committee of the whole, where we're gathering information on these items, whereas the Board of Education meetings, board meetings are, those formal meetings where we're taking action.
In a way for the Cow meeting, we'd be getting least restrictive, because we're giving people more time to address anything they wish, but at the same time, we're saying, when our meeting is going on, this is not public comment time. We'll listen to you beforehand, but not during the meeting.
Well, and didn't we say we wanted it to be consistent?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
And we did say we wanted it to be consistent.
Right. And that would be, that would be putting a desk inconsistent.
Correct. But not necess, I don't think, I think they're two different types of meetings.
Yeah. Right. One's a business meeting and one's a committee meeting, so I think, I think there has to be, there has to be a line as to where, you know, we put those community comments and what people get to say in those, in those two particular meetings. So then maybe the best thing ahead would be align the policy to have, you know, documentation regarding the committee of the whole and documentation regarding the regular board meeting.
Well, we currently have the ability to allow somebody, if we wish to recognize them, to speak. We still have that ability to do that. So if somebody has such a strong belief or maybe is an expert at whatever we're discussing, we should be listening to those people, but there might be a case-by-case basis to recognize that person.
Yeah, so we certainly, you know, if that's your wish, we can delineate in that item A, we can edit it to say, you know, the committee of the whole is public input on agenda items, and public participation at the regular meeting is more of an open forum to speak.
Or whatever, whatever you want, whatever variation.
I'm okay with that.
Sounds good.
So adding a, adding a particular community comment to the committee of the whole meeting, is that what you're asking?
Right.
Okay.
That they can talk any.
About any, anything other than just the agenda item. Oh, I'm sorry, Caitlin.
I did notice, looking at our policies, we do have policy zero, one, five, six, that's regarding just committee of the whole, and it does talk about kind of the verbiage on committee of the whole agenda, that members of the audience, while they have questions and share insights on the committee of the whole agenda. So we do have a policy on that.
I think this policy only addresses board meetings, not committee of the whole meetings.
Okay.
We certainly can reach out to Neola and seek some clarification on the tail end of that item A, what their intent is in stating order of business.
Okay.
So do we want to do we So do we want to, do we have, do we, okay.
Do you need a motion, or can we just move this? Can we move this just to October meeting?
The consensus, though, the consensus, you want a consensus, either example one or two, correct?
Correct.
I think two is more clear on that.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so do we have a consensus to move example two forward to tweak and come back before us at the October Committee of the Hall meeting? Is that correct?
I agree.
Yes.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you. You guys are really stumping me tonight. All right, we're gonna move on to item I, consider the second reading of Neola, volume twenty-nine, number one, policy updates, the second round of this. And as we all saw, there was an exorbitant amount of policy reading there. So do we lump that as a whole? Do we have a motion to approve Neola, volume twenty-nine, number one, the second reading?
I'll make the motion.
I will second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, then, I believe, item six, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Trade the computers. Put me half the meeting to figure out.
Who's kidding us anyway?